... meeting for August 22nd, 2017. We've been experiencing some technical difficulties, so bear with us. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. I ask that Von Sullivan come down and offer our invocation. The pledge will be led by Councilwoman Christine Price Allen. Please stand.
Father in heaven, we thank you for the beautiful day that we're enjoying today. Father, we thank you for this rain that we're enjoying and the beautiful green scenery that we have here in the middle of summer. We give you glory and honor for your creation. Father, we thank you for this occasion and these men and women and their willingness to serve and conduct the business of this city. Father, I ask that you have your hand upon them and provide them a blessing of discernment and peace. And, Father, I just thank you so much for this great city, dedicated people that we have providing services and it's a great place, Lord, and we give you glory and honor for that. This great land as well. Father, we thank you for the freedom we enjoy in this great land and those men and women who are all over the world willing to sacrifice to preserve that freedom. Father, we ask that you provide our land healing. Father, I ask that you provide us unity and peace. Thank you for your son, Jesus. We thank you for the blood that was shed on the cross on our behalf. It's in his name I pray. Amen.
The pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any community-related announcements we need to pass on?
Hey, I've got one. This weekend was a big weekend for one of our Midwest City residents, also one of my former students. Taylor Gooch, whose dad taught for me and his mom Amber is an attorney. Taylor earned his PGA card this weekend. He has been on the web.com tour. He won a tournament this weekend. I think little Taylor made a little over $300,000 this summer, but now he gets to where he can really make some money. He's had to struggle doing that. But Taylor went to Trobe Elementary School, Carl Albert High School, OSU, and now the PGA Tour. So it's a big honor. He'll be the first, I guess, Midwest City person to ever make it on the PGA Tour. And this will give you an idea. They'll do these interviews with a lot of these good golfers, and they'll ask them, "What's your favorite golf course?" And you'll hear Pebble Beach, Augusta, Torrey Pines. When Taylor was interviewed, they go, "What's your favorite golf course you've ever played?" He said John Conrad Golf Course in Midwest City, Oklahoma. And it's a thrill to see him be successful because if you keep up with golf much like I do, 99% of the guys on the PGA Tour were all born with silver spoons in their mouth. Or as Barry Switzer said one time, "They were born on third base and they tell everybody they hit a triple." And Taylor got up to bat and did it all on his own. And a great honor for us. I can't wait till he gets back. I think if he gets back, we need to do something for him here or something like that because he is a Midwest City kid through and through and just great, great young man.
Boy, I want to follow that with sanitation service over Labor Day. But if you do have sanitation service and recycling on Monday, Labor Day, that will take place on Wednesday. We have our last Summer Fest event at Charles Johnson on September 8th. We have our doggy paddle next Monday, Monday after Labor Day.
On Labor Day.
On Labor Day. And we have the Splash and Dash this Friday from 6:30 to 8:00. And I assume that that kind of starts at the swimming pool, correct?
Yes.
And is it 5K or do we?
1K.
Just a 1K?
Two laps of the pool and 1K run.
Okay, all right.
It's with the little guy.
Any other announcements? We do have a big event going on in the city of Midwest City, our Reed Center. It's called Tinker in the Primes. This is our 12th year to host this big event. And basically, it brings together defense contractors and the military together under one roof so they can talk logistics and all the stuff that goes into rebuilding all the aircraft that come through Tinker. This morning, we were there at the opening ceremony with Governor Fallon, a number of representatives from Tinker, and there were people from 26 different states and four different foreign countries here in our community seeing Midwest City and seeing what we do for our Air Force Base. So that's a plus. And Tim and his group over at the Reed Center are doing a fantastic job. And people leave here and go tell them what a good convention and time that they have here. So that's a plus for our city. Right now, we've got a couple of sad things to do. We've got a couple of proclamations for a couple of retirees. So... It may not be sad to you. Chuck is like the godfather around here. If anything goes wrong in any of these buildings, who do we call? Chuck. Call Chuck. That's all I've heard. 31 years I was a police partner, call Chuck. He knows what to do. And this is a bittersweet for all of us because of his legacy that he's leaving behind and the work that he's done for our city. So with all that said, whereas Chuck Belk began his employment with the city of Midwest City as an electrical inspector in developmental services on December 2nd, 1985, after proudly serving our country in the Vietnam War and working as an electrician in the Oklahoma City area from 1979 to 1985. Whereas on June 1st, 1990, Chuck moved from electrical inspector to housing rehabilitation specialist. And by May 1st, 1992, Chuck was promoted to chief building official, serving the city for 31 years. And whereas for over 20 years, he has professionally served the city as the Midwest City Staff Advisor for the Midwest City Electrical Board, the Midwest City Plumbing and Gas and Mechanical Board, and the Midwest City Builders Advisory Board. And whereas Chuck is affectionately known as Ice Cream Man. I'm sure there's a story behind that one. And some of his colleagues, some of his colleagues' favorite memories include the undying love of books on military history, afternoon green apple breaks, the infamous gator dance and singing at the city Christmas party. The gay really? Somebody call the police? The scandalous Easter peep show, and the secret trap door he used frequently to escape unnoticed, the strict one-question policy a day policy, Tuesday morning environmental inspections at the golf course, his impossible task of keeping City Hall comfortable to everyone, and most all for his caring spirit. And therefore, I, Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim Friday, August 25th, as Chuck Belk Day. Now, I've known him. I'm going to give away a little cigarette. I've known him since he was that high. His dad was my scout master.
About strobe sides.
Huh?
About strobe sides.
About strobe sides? The parting gift, Mike. So I've known Gerald and his brother Fred forever and have got to work with him throughout the years. And again, this is another loss for the city. Whereas Gerald Pettigale began his employment in the city of Midwest City as a communications specialist on October 2nd, 1995, and in 2003 transferred to Neighborhood Services as a code enforcement officer before retiring as a code enforcement officer two on August 9th, 2017. Whereas Gerald Hart, for public service, spilled over into his second job as a dispatcher for Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office and the Chickasha Police Department and as an EMT, Emergency Medical Technician for the Midwest Regional Medical Center. And whereas he'll be remembered for his compassion and humanity and his beloved parrot, Oscar, who was sitting on Mr. Henson's shoulder a couple of days ago. Therefore, I, Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, August 23rd, as Gerald Pettigale Day. Ladies and gentlemen, there's a lot of corporate knowledge walking out the doors this evening, and they've served our community extremely well. And this is just a prime example of the 459 employees that this city owns. Okay, strike that from the record, please, that Midwest City employs, and we're extremely lucky to have them. And again, thank you, Chuck, and thank you, Gerald, for your dedication to our city and our community. It's greatly appreciated. And it's been one of those weeks, trust me. We'll go into the... Thank you, Mr. Henson. We'll go into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that the council members, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any one proposed item does not meet with the approval of all council members or the members of the audience which discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. Go into our first discussion item.
That would be PC 1913 Public Hearing with Discussion, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution for a Special Use Permit to Allow the Use of a Group Care Facility in the RHD High Density Residential District for the property described as a part of the northeast quarter of Section 33 Township 12 North, Range 2 West, located at 615 West Blue Ridge. Mr. Harless?
I'll be glad to answer any questions. This is just more of a housekeeping item for the applicant.
Is the applicant in the audience? Have you had a chance to review the staff report?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Second item?
This is PC 1914 Public Hearing with Discussion, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution for a Special Use Permit to Allow the Use of a Group Care Facility in the RHD High Density Residential District for the property described as a part of the southeast quarter of Section 34 Township 12 North, Range 2 West, located at the 2900 Park Lawn Drive in Midwest City. Billy?
Again, this is similar as the previous item. I'd be glad to answer any questions, should you have any. Staff recommends approval. It's just more of a housekeeping item for the applicant.
Is there anyone in the audience here representing this item? Have you had a chance to review the staff report?
Yes, sir.
You okay with everything?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. Next item?
This is Discussion, Consideration of Changing the Official Midwest City Flag.
This is a contest that we're rolling out to the art students of Carl Albert and Midwest City High School. And after further discussion, we're also going to reach out to Choctaw Public Schools and Oklahoma City Public Schools since they also have students that live in our area. And we'll be bringing this item back for further discussion.
So no action is necessary on this item?
Correct.
Okay, now we would have now new business in public discussion.
Anyone have any new business or public discussion bring before the council? Yes, sir, Mr. Thompson.
My name's Charles Thompson, 10-400 Northeast Fourth. First off, I'd like to say thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I've been wanting this for over a year and a half. I think that it's going to be a great addition to our city.
I can't wait to see a fantastic new flag flying above the flag. That's my hopes as well.
I just have one question. I don't know if you guys saw this, but it's an amazing thing. Molly, the girl up here that was... She raised $750 for the animal shelter, which is amazing. We need to hire her in some aspect for the city. I was blown away that a child of that age would do that well and have that much commitment to raise that kind of money. My question is, I made a post on the page, I said, "Where's that money go?" And I wouldn't try and to be snarky or anything, but my question to the council is, it sounded like it goes into the budget, which may be okay, but my request is, when somebody like that raises money for the animal shelter, I would really like to see that that's used to adopt dogs or help adopt dogs or buy things for adopted dogs. I would hate to think that that goes into the fund and helps put dogs down. So I just think maybe we could... And I think they already have a nonprofit associated with the animal shelter. So maybe we could make some kind of ordinance that any money donated goes into a special fund and doesn't kill animals.
Well, we do have a special fund for donations. Now, does it get any further? Do we define it any further than it be used at the animal shelter? No. I mean, we have, I believe we've used it actually for some capital purchases here and there.
Right.
So it's really up to the discretion of the animal shelter. They make the recommendations to us as to how to use the money.
And I know the animal shelter needs all the money it can get for a plethora of things. I'm just suggesting maybe when people donate, especially that... Man, I was blown away. That little girl really inspired me. So maybe we don't use that money to put dogs down. That's all I'm saying.
Also, she did a fundraiser that was organized for Molly's, Paws for Caws, at Chili's, and funds were raised from that. And right now, there is a quilt that has been donated to be raffled off, and the proceeds donated to the animal shelter, not for Molly's purposes, but those are going around. So if you're interested in supporting the cause or anybody in the community or in attendance tonight, there's signs going around to purchase tickets to win that.
So who's doing the quilting?
Help me, Mayor.
Lady by the name of Debbie Phillips, she's helped us out before on donations for canines in the police department, and she's a go-getter, and she's trying to raise some money to...
Epoxy the floor at the animal shelter, essentially.
To clean up the floor in the animal shelter.
Do we have a flyer or anything on that?
I don't have one, but there's one going around. I know at Oki So, which is on 15th Street, right across from Academy, Rilla Johnson has that business, and she was going to be putting one up there, fabric quilt.
Okay.
But if we find anything, we'll definitely...
I'll look into it. I'll definitely do it.
Is that the young lady that came here?
Yes.
Yes.
What is her name again?
Molly.
Molly. Molly, I'm going to give you a hand clap.
Yeah, I think she should have a hand. Yeah, great job. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to depart from regular, normal order of business and recess the council and call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority Agenda. We do have a consent agenda with this agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any one item does not meet with the approval, all the trustees or members of the audience which discuss an item will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the new discussion and new business portion of our agenda for the Midwest City Municipal Authority. Does anyone in the audience have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing known, we are hereby adjourned. I call to order the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We have two, three discussion items on this agenda. Go ahead with the first.
First item is Discussion, Consideration of Approving the Minutes of the August 8th, 2017 Staff Briefing and Regular Meeting as Submitted.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Second item?
Discussion, Consideration of Declaring All of Lots 5 through 7 and the east 55 feet of Lot 8, Block 6 Aviation Acres Edition, aka 5900 through 5916 Short Street surplus, and declaring staff to dispose of the property for $10.75 per square foot, less closing costs.
Move to approve.
Hold on, sorry. Question, you talked about that would be less the sidewalk crossing piece, if they're just not used, it'd be like that before we vote on it?
I think it's contained within the agreement. Is that not correct, Robert? The stipulation on the omitting or keeping out, eliminating the sidewalk areas?
The sidewalk, the area that the sidewalk slash trail now encompasses will be figured by a surveyor when they do the alte survey prior to closing, and then we will deduct that from that cost. The developer will have to move that sidewalk to a design similar to what we have in that packet.
I just wanted to know, can you just... How about clarify before we vote?
It's in here. It says the value of the property being dedicated for sidewalk relocation will be deducted from the sales price.
Sorry, thank you.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
One.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Next item?
This would be Discussion, Consideration of Action to Reallocate Assets, Change Fund Managers, or Make Changes in the Statement of Investment Policy Guidelines and Objectives. No action is necessary on this item.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we move into the new business public discussion of this agenda. Anyone have anything to bring before the Midwest City Hospital Authority? Hearing known, we will...
Executive session.
Move to go into executive session?
This executive session is Discussion, Consideration of One Entering into Executive Session as Allowed Under 25OS Section 307(c)(10) to Confer on Matters Pertaining to Economic Development, including the Transfer of Property, Financing, or the Creation of a Proposal to Entice a Business to Remain or Locate Within the City.
Go ahead, move us to the...
Yes.
Then we'll reconvene.
Move to go into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Reconvene the council authority or the council agenda. We do have an executive session on this agenda as well.
This is Discussion, Consideration of One Entering into Executive Session as Allowed Under 25OS Section 307(b)(4) to Discuss Ahmed Barini et al. versus City of Midwest City, case numbers C404581, C404582, 0404583, 040...
Besides the fact that you have 2020 vision, move to go to executive session.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in the executive session. Thank you.
Yeah, I figured he would.
Yeah, I figured he would.